Okay, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the City of Groton Committee of the Hall for Monday, November 27, 2023. We are in council chambers and also on Zoom. So Clerk McCura, please call the role.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor via Zoom, Guendepo, and Counselor Patterson, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Artali, Counselor Sheffield, Counselor Norris, and Finance Director Yuhas are present.
Okay, thank you. So new business is that we'll start out with the Groton Sail project. So Admiral, if you want to, you want to come up and you can introduce and then we'll bring everybody else up. You'll be, you'll be sharing the microphone. I can't tell from here, is it green? Okay, you'll need to press the. Mr. Mayor, my name is John Padgett. I'm the Chair of the Groton Sail Foundation. We have with me Mark Ofinger, who was the Vice Chair of our foundation. We have Jim Streeter, who's the Treasurer of our foundation, and we have Rick Norris, who's the Project Manager for the Groton Sail Foundation for the monument that we hope to put up. We're here today to give you a very brief presentation and then to answer any questions you might have. But we'd like you, when we leave today, we'd like you to know our status as it is as we sit here today. So the reason I brought this to council, as you've probably read about it in newspaper, we have heard about it on Facebook or town council meetings. This has been going on for a long time, and I wanted to bring the Groton Sail Foundation here to talk to the City of Groton residents and to the council. Okay. If I ever do, Rick Norris, to then, I would give the overview. Why don't you take the head chair?
Okay. Come on up. Come on up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to come speak with you. It's part of our outreach program. We're talking and starting to make our rounds to all the local governments because they've all participated or supported somehow, both the submarine base and the families that, that were left behind while the sailors were at sea. So we really appreciate this opportunity. We wanted to start with a video. There she is. We have a short video we'd like to show you. We think you'll find that.
Can we share the screen so that the deputy can see it? Okay.
My son is one of the friends of mine. It's not fair if the dad's not, it's not fair that the lady takes that away. That's kind of something that I try to steer away from. And to dads out there doing a wonderful thing, and it's hard, but how do we make the best of where we are right now?
I'm John Padgett. I am the Chair of the Groton Sail Foundation. Our foundation is working to provide a monument to honor the men and women who design, build, operate, maintain our submarines.
This is a community that embraces the military. We have the Coast Guard across the river. We have National Guard. We have, of course, the subbase.
The Groton Monument is extremely important, not just for the people who live here, but frankly, you know, across the country and literally the world.
This will hopefully will energize the younger generation. Once they see this monument, they want to get involved and want to help and, you know, get a job at Electric Boat and produce a product that's going to go out and protect us for the rest of their lives.
Seeing the monument itself, you drive down past the library and you see it there. To me, you know, when you talk about EB, as somebody that's been there so long, people ask what I do. You know, I still get excited about that. You know, I'm very proud of what I do, and to see that piece be captured and put up there for display, to me, it's again, it's an honor for anybody that had to do with that.
The USS Groton Sail Monument really provides a moment for the expansive community, the expansive community of designers and engineers that bring their technical prowess, the shipbuilders who bring their skills and craftsmanship, the educators who educate the people within our community, the sailors who we thank for their service and dedication.
It is a monument. Monuments last a long time, and to me, that's the kind of cause that I think, you know, people should really feel excited about, that they're doing something for legacy, not just the, you know, the moment we're in right now.
We wanted to create the overall monument to really celebrate the importance of submarines to Groton and Groton to the submarine industry. We replicated the entire size of the submarine with an earthen berm. We located the sail for the USS Groton within what we're calling the Design and Construction Plaza to celebrate all that goes into design and construction. We have the underway plaza to celebrate and tell the story of what it's like to be underway when you're on a submarine, the family plaza which celebrates the families that are back at home while their sailors are away, and the community connection which really brings us full circle back to what the submarine industry is, the Groton, and what Groton has meant to the submarine industry.
I think that having a monument that's so visibly submarine, the shape of the submarine, the size of the submarine, the parts of the submarine, will allow those connections to be made a little easier sometimes for the community at large. Doesn't remember those families that are living without a family member, and seeing it every day will help feed on the memory of them.
Yeah, that was, that was one of our first efforts down here is actually that was an updated version of the original, the original video, if you will, and we thought it was pretty meaningful that we'd like to get as many people in town and in the area to see that because it is pretty, a pretty powerful piece. We have a brief presentation. It's the same presentation base that we gave to the town council and the RTM shortly, and it's relatively short, and we'll try and go through it very quickly. I'll talk about part of it, and Mark will, and also Jim Streeter, who's our, who's our paver guru, and I'm sure he has a few groups for you on that. So, so if we can move forward, that's basically the location and where it is. Let's see, how do we do this one? Nope, not that. Now, how do we get back?
Give it to her, just say next.
Yeah, next, yeah. If you want to just do that, Danny, you can just do next, and we'll, we'll do that. Okay, so, so we'll just move on. This is the, so this is executive, a little bit of information on the Executive Committee and who's involved, and we have quite a, quite an array of, of people. We have retired naval folks, obviously. We have retired politicians. We have other community folks, one from EB, and actually Mary Galbraith, the retired Mayor of the, of the city here. So we have a pretty robust group of folks that are out there working on this. Also, we have a series of tri-chairs. When we were kind of running into a rough spot with fundraising, we were able to bring on three gentlemen, two ex-presidents of EB, Electric Boat, that went on to work for the parent company, and also Vice Admiral Mike Connor. Those folks, through their contacts, have already been helpful to us in raising some of our funding. We also have a consultant, Case Carob, from Kate Carob Advancement. She's been our fundraising consultant, if you will, and really provided some good guidance as far as, as moving along and helping us put together a fundraising plan. Okay, next. This is the history part. We typically let Mark take the history. We've been around, some of us have been around for like 20-some years looking at this, but I'll let Mark talk about the history.
I could read into that quite a bit, Rick. So I mean, we, we started kind of tracking what was going on with the USS Groton around the time it was decommissioned, and initially it was pulled up to Maine and then went out to Washington State. We kept checking in every once in a while. Some of you were involved in those efforts, and the council, with town council would talk about it every once in a while. Ultimately, when subcentury occurred, that's when things started to move. There was some renewed efforts to figure out where, where the submarine was and get a handle on timeframe for it to be cut up. And fast forward, we formally, the town and the city formally requested that the sail and the rudder be returned to Groton, and for a while, we were spending a fair amount of time trying to figure out how we were going to get it from Washington State to here until one day, we got a phone call and it was delivered up at the subbase. Still don't know how it got there, but it's there, and it's been sitting up in, up in the north storage yard for, for a number of years. The committee, you know, there were a core group of people early on. People came and people went, but there was a real effort after subcentury to kind of reconstitute the committee, get some additional people involved. And the committee, of which the mayor is a member, the committee has been meeting on a very regular basis for a number of years now. Initially, our Chair was Bill Vogel, who was the first Commander of the USS Groton. Unfortunately, Bill passed away a number of years ago, and John Padgett graciously agreed to, to take over at that time as, as Chair of the committee. As Rick noted, we think we have a pretty diverse group of, of folks on the committee representing all aspects of, of not only submarine life, but community life, community involvement, and, and others, and certainly if there are folks interested in joining the effort, we can always use additional folks either on the committee or on one of our, our various subcommittees that, that have been formed. So I'll stop with the, the history. Maybe just really quickly, we, we did identify a fair number of years ago, a whole bunch of sites for the sail. Ultimately, we chose the site in front of the Groton Public Library Senior Center, Thrive 55. That allowed us, and as you'll see some, from some pictures, that allowed us to basically replicate the outline of the submarine. If you were looking down on it, you will be, the submarine will be replicated with an earthen berm and a walkway down the spine of it, so folks have a sense of, of how big it is. It also provides a great opportunity for some, some information displays and so forth. But I'll, I'll stop there and turn it back over to Rick.
Yeah, there's a little more history of that, and, and part of it was early on, like 1997, when it was decommissioned, things kind of started, went to the council. The council was not really interested in bringing Groton home at that point, although interest, as Mark noted, rejuvenated later on, and we were able to move forward. So we, you know, have hired an architect. The architect is, is working hard, and he's put together these drawings and the plans for us, and he's really done an excellent job of putting those things together. And if you look at the drawings as we go forward, we'll, we'll go just flip through a number of them that you can see. And as Mark noted, the submarine is, the length of the submarine, the berm is four feet high, so really, on a flat piece of ground like that, it's going to be a pretty massive structure. The sail itself's 20 feet high, 35 feet wide across the planes, and the rudder's eight to 10 feet high also. So if we can just kind of move on through the slides, I'll just, that is the walkway down the center. So with the trees overhead and the walk down the center, it makes you feel sort of like you're in, in the actual submarine walking down. And that walk is probably a couple hundred feet long as you go from the sail all the way back to the rudder. And along those sides, you can see how it's tapered at the top of the, of those walls, which are going to be black steel. It's where all, and a lot of our information, all placards are going to be, and, and we're working on that content right now. So you can see is that, as we move forward, the bottom of it will be the pavers, which I'll have Jim talk about, and he can go into that, but you can see how that, how that looks, and it'll give you the feeling of how it actually is. And that walks eight to 10 feet wide, so there's plenty of room for handicap accessibility, plus a crowd if they ever show up. And we can go, if we go to the next one. At night, we are looking at putting some lights along the bottom, so that'll be lighted, that walkway will be lighted at night, and also the sail will be lighted. So when you come off of 95 down 117, you'll see this lighted structure, and you'll wonder how this submarine got there from where it was supposed to be. But, but that's part of it. I think the next slide is really the main area. We can put 195 chairs, the architect says, in there, probably comfortably 150. I would hope that that plaza becomes a place where we could have events. That walkway goes across to our, to our memorials down by the library and the senior center. So it sort of ties all those, all those things that honor folks together in that area. And it is the geometric center of town, so, and we're really kind of proud that it, it describes really and displays the submarine capital of the world, if you will. So the next one is, that's our finances, just kind of an estimate of where we are right now. You can see the project says 2.35 million, basically. It's probably going to be a little bit more than that, but we have been through the fundraising process, and we've actually raised about, to update those figures, have raised about $900,000, nearly $900,000 at this point. We have worked with them. The Admiral's been working with the History and Heritage Command for us, who are actually going to renovate the sail, the rudder, and present us with a completed artifact. And we're still working with them, so even though the money shows up there, if something happened, that fell apart, we and the committee would have to raise that additional funding. So dropping down to the remaining funds, we still need about a million dollars to raise, and we have other things going on, the paver program. I think this is probably a good time to let Jim talk about the pavers.
I guess somebody has to be the salesman, somebody has to put their foot forward. From the beginning, we decided that the program should include the entire community, individuals specifically, whether they be workers from Electric Boat, family, or submariners. We were all inclusive with that. That's what, why our mission statement says is dedicated to the designers, the builders, the operators, maintainers, and the community and organizations that support the submarines. So it's all inclusive. So we felt that the paver program would be good for the individuals, but in a selfish sense, it will also bring us a significant amount of money. With the walkway that Rick mentioned, 10 feet wide, of course, we'll have a, a pattern there, we're anticipating selling between 2,000 and 3,000 pavers. Not bricks, these are pavers, and I brought one with me, and I get sick of lugging it around, but it is a paver. They're, what you might consider expensive, but it's, it's an everlasting monument, and it can be to memorialize someone, or it can be for a submariner who wants to announce that he was a submariner or is a submariner. They cost $250. If we sell the 3,000, that's my goal, that should bring in approximately $700,000 toward this project. So that's why this paver program is very important to us. And again, I'm sick of lugging this around. We have a paver as this. We have logos. We have 10 separate logos to select from. This was our last design that we wanted to have as a generic design. Groton is known as the submarine capital of the world. So this here, you'll see, you'll have the submarine and the words Groton, Connecticut inside of it, and then you have four lines below it. Now, this one happens to say name, but it can be, the first one could be dedicated to. The second line could be a person. But you have 21 characters per line that you can select from, including spaces and, and punctuation marks. These will be on that walkway, so it'll be open to the public. It'll be permanent. I'll give you an example of, of one that we just, just happened to think of, and you might, as a politician, because I've been there, all right? One of the former mayors in the town of Groton called, and she wanted one of these, and she has her name. The next line is mayor. The next line is town of Groton, and the final line is the dates that she served. So counselors and mayors, it certainly would be good to have your name, counselor or mayor, city of Groton. And that's where I was caught in between because I was the mayor in the town, but deputy mayor in the city, so I, I'm not going to buy, well, maybe I'll buy two. That's the only way. But your support with this, and I'm going to, off the record, after the meeting, speak with the mayor to see if we might find a location here at City Hall to place one of these with the brochures, so the public can have access to, to purchase them and also. That's all I have, sir.
That's all you have? Okay. Well, if you, if we go back to sort of the other potential funding sources, we're looking to the state of Connecticut. The committee actually raised the money that the town, and then provided to the town to purchase the right of way. So 91,000 and, and change for that. So we, we'd like to go back to the state, and we've been working with the state senator to see if we can't recoup that money from the state. And we think, you know, it was interesting that at the beginning, the state wouldn't donate the property to begin with, so we're kind of, kind of taken aback a little bit about that, but we're working with that. And you'll see the bottom line, it was a potential funding source, but it now is real. We actually, partially through ARPA and partially through under, other funding from the town, they gave us $250,000 to get, to get started. So that was part, all of that, that is part of the 900,000 that we've raised to date. Okay, if we go to the next one, we can see some of the major gifts. EB had 125,000 over a five-year period. I think we've got two payments from them, right, to date. CMEC was 131,000, and Groton Utilities, it looks like, was a 50,000 from them. And then we have, like I said, our other fellows working on, on some of the other fundraising events. We have anything else on fundraising? Nope. Nope, that's all we have? Okay. This is kind of estimated schedule. It's really, the schedule is, we can't finish until we get started, so we're, we're waiting to see because we have EB has been looking at the sail and the rudder for us too, along with History and Heritage Command. So whenever they put out their RFP, History and Heritage, then we can get, they can get bids coming in, and we can find out who could do the work for us. The, the goal right now is to have the lower portion of the sail, because it had to be cut in two pieces to be transported, to have that mounted on the base by Veterans Day next year, and then finish up the whole rest of the site and hopefully be done in the spring of 2025. So it is a pretty aggressive schedule, but like I say, we really need to get started on the, on the sail because that's kind of the long pole in the tent. And I think the last slide is just another picture to kind of refresh your memory. You can see we added a couple of things there. We have a tie-in to the library, which is the community, if you will, and then we were able to put a little circular sidewalk in front of some of the existing monument flagpoles and things, so makes accessibility a little bit better there. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and, oh, here you go, John.
The Naval History and Heritage Command, in addition to taking the initiative to provide us with the money to turn the bits and pieces of the sail that we have now into a viable artifact, they're going to do the environmental remediation and the sandblasting and getting ready for painting. In addition to that, and I think quite importantly, History and Heritage Command will also then make that its own monument, so that the folks who run the museum, the Submarine Force Museum down on the waterfront near the subbase, will also be responsible for the long-term sustainment of the artifact itself. Now, that doesn't mow the grass, but it means 25 or 30 years now won't have to repaint it. History and Heritage Command will come in, just like if you remember this past year, they took the Nautilus up the river, put it in the dry dock, spiffied it all up and made it good for the next 30 years. That was because Nautilus belongs to History and Heritage Command. So this sail and rudder, the sail and rudder would be part of the History and Heritage Command, and they would administer it through the, the museum. So, and so it is, it looks to me like it'll be a zero impact except for the mowing the grass for, for any, any future people in the, in the town of Groton. So we think, we think that's good, and the money has been set aside. The, our, the request for proposal is remaining, it will not be impacted by the continuing resolution or all the other shenanigans that are going on relative to the federal budget. It's set aside, and it, and it's, it's protected in a sense, so we're, we're quite confident that money will come, and the 750 number is an estimate based upon what we think it'll cost to get it done. So for example, if EB comes up and says, we'll do part of it, that's fine. They'll use that money for training or use that work for training, and that'll take away some of the costs that we have to come up with. So now, subject to your questions. Any questions, council?
Comments?
Counselor Piazza?
First, I want to say I think it's a wonderful thing, having been a widow of a submariner in my earlier twenties, and also my mother worked at EB, was first woman x-ray, and I have an older daughter at EB presently, so I'm very proud of all of that. And, three, yep. I'll be buying, trust me.
City Council, too.
Right. So, yes, so I, this is a very exciting thing. Only the thing that I, I mean, I think it's, I just think, when I see this, I think about school trips, you know, even ingesting our younger generation to this and doing field trips there, be a wonderful thing. And when you were talking about maintenance, that was one, that was going to be my question. So the walkway per se, let's say, how long would you perceive that that would be viable to tour? You know, like if we had snow or something, are they actually going to clear, clear the path or it just won't be open at that time?
No, we, the mowing the grass and showing the snow would be left to the town.
Okay, okay, all right.
Yeah, and, and we'll have some sort of MOU with the town. We had an existing one, but that one's kind of gone by the wayside, so we'll have to have something with them again, and it depends on who has to, who the sail and rudder is loaned to, whether we could get it loaned to the town or whether it has to be loaned to the, to committee and go forward with that.
And I did want to say that I was, that, I don't believe they do them anymore, but I was able to do a dependence cruise back in the mid-'80s.
Oh, yeah.
And rode on the Fairwater Plains. Pregnant. So that was quite the deal.
And one thing we didn't mention is the location. It's right, right near Grasshaw Tech. It's right near the middle school. It's right near the high school. So the hope is those kids, if they do field trips down there, they'll say, geez, I'd like to build that, or I'd like to be on one of those, or I like, you know.
Counselor Norris?
Thank you for doing this. Great program.
You're welcome.
I remember when I was little, before I came to the States, my grandfather, when he heard that I was moving to Connecticut, actually said, they build submarines there. And I'm like, they do? You know, so that's a great thing. But it, you know, it's going to bring together the love of people that have built it, maintained it, served on it, but it's also going to be a magnet for the younger generations all over the world to come and look at it. So thank you. You've done way more than you think you have, and it's going to be very touching for generations to come, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? You, Danny, could you minimize this? I can see if the hand's up. I can see if the hand's up. Okay. Well, just, did you have any questions or comments?
Really, I just want to say thank you. I think to echo what you already said, it is a great project that I've been kind of following it in the background. I know several people who are involved. And I know we originally wanted it in the city, and we couldn't find a good location for it. So I think the public library is a great, you know, right there in the senior side of the 355 right there. Make it a great spot for it because it will be a attractive place to go and get a little parking lot ready right there. So that's really all, just to say thank you. I think it's a really cool project, and I'm excited to see it move forward.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Piazza?
Yes, I wanted to ask about the papers. So you had said that you have flyers and so forth. Will this also be online by chance? Will people actually order online? Okay, and what site would that be on?
I just gave Danny some brochures that we have. And you have the option, you can fill out the brochure and mail a check with it. Or on that brochure, there's also a site, very simple, USS Groton Sail.
Okay.
And there's an option there, purchase a paver, and you can do so with a credit card on, online there.
Perfect. I just, I wanted to spread the word at work. Thank you.
Right. There's also additional information on that site, you know, some of the things that are going on with this.
Mm-hmm. Great, thank you.
Like if you wanted to make a 10 or 20,000 dollar donation, you're welcome to do that online also.
Hope we get those.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none? That was informing, so there's no action coming out of that. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming out.
Yeah, so we certainly thank you for the opportunity to come speak with you. Thank you so much.
Jim, are you going to leave that paver here?
I can leave it here and, or I can drop it off tomorrow with some extra brochures.
All right, then, we can do that. Danny and I need to talk about where we're going to put this, but we did, I did commit to having a table or something out there where we could showcase it.
I will leave this here, then I don't have to carry it.
See how easily she picked that up, Jim? Just look at it.
She doesn't know, but she's just bought it. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right, Ron? Come on up and, well, if you want to leave that chair, we can, we'll need to bring a chair for when you introduce Mark.
So we're hitting the very end of the calendar year. There's a certain amount of renewals that are for some standing services we use that hit the calendar year. So we're coming for approval now so that we can issue POs for starting the new calendar year in January. The first one I'm going to talk about is Harris Computer Systems, which is our Northstar billing system. That's the system, our customer information system that customer service uses for everything. All customer contacts are logged in there. The billing system comes through there. It creates our bills for both Bosser Light and Power and for Groton Utilities. It's an annual renewal. It was for about $80,000 last year. This year, the renewal is for 85,000. It's a sole source because our computer systems, once we go through the procurement process, we're pretty much stuck with them until you do another procurement and spend quite a bit of money to update them to a new system. Any questions on Northstar?
Questions or comments on this motion, I mean, on this item? And I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 12/4/2023.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Abstention, motion carries. Okay, lobbying services?
The next annual renewal is for Medici Services. I'm going to introduce Mark DiBella. Mark DiBella has been with us as GU's lobbyist for a number of years. He has a history with us. It's a professional service that we do very well with. He can actually get a lot of support and government support for us at times, but let me let him introduce and talk about himself.
Thanks, Ron. Mayor, council members, thanks for having me in tonight. As Ron mentioned, it's been quite a while. It's actually hard to believe, but I believe this will be 24 years if this contract or the agreement is approved. It's hard to believe. I was basically fresh out of college, sitting in Alex Chizolm's office there many years ago. But I think we've been very successful. You have my, it's every year I prepare for Ron and end-of-the-year synopsis, kind of on what took place during the legislative session. But in essence, I am GU's lobbyist at all levels, basically with, in state government, but whether it's administrative, legislative, and over the years, as Ron has mentioned, we've had a lot of success. And it's on a day-to-day basis of going through and reading legislation every day and amendments that come out protecting the utility, working alongside CEMEC's lobbyists that they have as well. We've been, again, very successful and won't bog you down with the better part of 25 years and sessions of things. I know most recently, I shouldn't say most recent, it goes back the better part of a decade, but securing the state bonding for the Clean Water Project was a big win. It was something that took a number of years to get in place, but those $15 million from the state obviously went a long way to bonding dollars. So again, not just legislatively, but, you know, bonding dollars. And again, don't want to bore this body with it, but if anyone has any questions, whether they be general or specific, I'll do my best to answer them. So again, thank you so much for having me.
Questions or comments on this motion? Counselor Norris?
Thank you for coming in. So the Clean Water Project was probably your biggest...
It was a big win, sure. It was. I mean, whenever you can, whenever you can get the governor to put $15 million in bonding, you know, on the bond commission, it's a significant, not an insignificant number, not an insignificant win, sure.
Right. So moving into 24, two things. One, is there anything that you keep in your eye on that is dramatically important to GU? And what would you use as a marker of success or a goal for the upcoming year?
So there's always, over the last several sessions or more, it's been a lot of defense. The last, I would say, two to three years, like during the COVID times, things have been a little quieter. We went through a hot period, as you may recall, with, I would say, hot period where we had more action, right? Where we had issues at CEMEC level and legislation that was brought forward every year. I think we did a very good job of taking that legislation that was put forward and kind of rounding those edges, for lack of a better term, right, to where the MEUs were not damaged right there or, in some cases, you know, potentially just done away with, right? So that was several years of working through that. So we have, from session to session, it kind of, there are some sessions that are a little quieter and there are sessions that are a little louder. I would say for a benchmark going forward, you said for 24, you know, at this point, defensive in nature. So the committees that we'll be keeping an eye on, you know, energy is always a, is always a big one. And we have, you know, anything with water and so on and so forth. But we will be continuing to keep an eye on some of these larger energy bills. The last two bills that have been passed were primarily just dealt with our investor-owned utilities and not municipal utilities. Although in Senate Bill 7, there was, the bureau will be looking at how energy is procured and how municipals do it to see if there's any advantage as, for, or anything that our investor-owned utilities can take advantage of. So I would say going into this session, it's also a short session, so as we have a biennial budget, you know, here at the state, as I'm sure you're aware of, you have your odd years that are your longer years, which are really budget, budget years. And the even year is a non-budget year, even though they still open up the budget and make changes. So it's a shorter, more condensed period of time. So more defensive in nature, I would say, for 24 with a short session.
Right. But have you heard anything that we should be concerned about in the hallways up there?
At this point, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 12/4/2023.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion in the second. Hearing additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, closing?
The next one is a PO for Tinsdale Company. One of the things that was inside the 007 contract, which is our electrical workers' contract, was clothing that's, it's FR rated, which means fire-rated for sparks and different things when they work on high voltage or any voltage, actually. And it protects them and it's safety-related. It's required that we provide them with this. In recent years, that clothing doubled in price. So in that contract, the spend went from about 25,000 to, as you can see here, just over 50,000. So that PO now, being over 50, comes to council for final approval. This PO was issued for this fiscal year, which we're just about halfway through, but as the contract got approved, we're coming back for a change order to bring that up to just over 50,000. It's basically per person. In the contract, it's, I think it's 1750 per person, and there's about 30 guys.
Questions or comments on this resolution? Counselor Sheffield?
I think just the only thing was to probably reword the motion, I guess, to stipulate the original PO price of 23,250 to kind of make sure we add, you know, with the calculation of the additional 28,050 to give it to that 52,700. Just a grammatic, you know, just adding to how we got to 52,700 from the original 23,250 on the action item form, but it's not stipulated on the resolution.
Do what now? You just want to, you just want to put the number in?
Yeah, put the number, yeah.
So make sure the math works.
Yeah, so to add up to the 52,700 because it says that you're adding 28...
You're adding $28,000 for a total of 52,700.
Right. From where, though? From the original.
So the 52,700 is what's queuing it to come here.
Right. That's cumulative. But like I said, to put the original at 23,250 to put it all together of where it came from and how the additional 28,050 to give it to that final price, that was my idea.
It's in the action item form, but you're talking about putting it in the resolution itself.
Correct.
Right.
We can...
Mayor, can I just make a suggestion on that? Would it be art if we just added it to the whereas that addresses that PO 71431 in the amount of, and put it in the whereas?
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
That way, the resolution stays the same.
Yeah. Resolution stays the same. We'll do the whereas to add the original.
Yeah, because you have, the PO, the original PO number is in the whereas, so we could just put the dollar amount of that original PO.
Right. Okay, any other questions or comments? Counselor Piazza?
So reading through this, I mean, I mean, I'm especially, I like the idea about the prescription glasses and the coverage for that. My question is, in reference to the flame retardant clothing, so I'm assuming that each takes care of their own maintenance of the clothing, correct?
Correct.
And is there a certain way they have to get it cleaned, you know, per se?
So you just can't wash it in the normal wash with your own clothes with any wash. You have to take care of it so that it stays good. Exactly what they do, I can't, I actually don't know.
Okay.
But I know it is slightly different.
Right, because I was just thinking about it because, you know, I mean, you know, when you look at things and what people do in order to maintain their things over and so on, I know when, I have looked into when they came out with flame retardant clothing for children, especially under age of one, is that you couldn't wash with pure soap because that actually decreases the effect of the, I don't know if that's still today, because that was with my first child many years ago. So I was just wondering if they had to buy an extra product in order to sustain the maintenance of the clothing, if so, if that was thought of? And do you foresee people going to come in and say, well, I'm buying lots of this product in order to make sure that my flame retardant clothing is kept up to par?
To date, they haven't.
Okay.
And it's basically, when you negotiate a contract, you're running the rules that you negotiate inside the contract.
Mm-hmm.
And everybody's expected to know their side. Not all, in some contracts, they've, they may not provide FR clothing at all, and that would be a cost of, like, providing your tools at work.
Mm-hmm.
Most places, as it's required by OSHA rules that they wear it, do provide it.
Right. I just wonder if there was some, you know, expense, does it add up through the years for them to take care?
It's their responsibility to take care of it.
Right, right. No, I totally understand that.
What we're here for is for the increase in the cost of the flame retardant clothing.
Right. 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 I was just looking at, just realizing, I mean, I've had...
But that's not, I understand, but that's...
Uniform myself in that, you know, if it became, if they said, oh, you have to use a specific cling or dry clean a specific way, just didn't know.
It's up to them to maintain their flame retardant materials. They can, we can provide them information if we need to, but that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the increase in cost for the material, for the materials itself.
Mm-hmm. I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Okay. Any, Counselor Norris?
I'm sorry. Director. Can you explain, how does this, how does this become tagged in the budget? Is it, is there money in that line item? Do we just run and see where it goes as an overall for GU? How do we...
Do you want to answer that?
It's most likely going to run that line over budget with this change, when the budget's prepared, like Ron kind of mentioned, it takes the number of employees times what's in the contract, and there's kind of maybe a little bit of a buffer in there for new employees with the changes. But, so it's going to put it for this half of fiscal year potentially over, and then it'll be adjusted in the upcoming budgets.
Got it. And this pricing per individual is for one year?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, and as I was saying, it's about 20, so a new employee gets like $2,500, I actually think the number is, and I believe the number's 1750 per year, per ongoing employee.
Right.
They get that loaded into a PO by name.
Yeah.
And Tinsdale helps us track, the guys actually get a catalog, or the employees get a catalog of all the products that they can buy, and they actually run an account and can't go over. And it's tracked by purchase order.
I guess what I'm asking is, so the new contract with this pricing is for one year, not multiple years?
Right.
All right.
Right. We just, we track it by fiscal year.
Okay, by fiscal year?
Yep. Fiscal year in the GL is charged for that fiscal year. So when the year changes, so on July 1st, it goes right against next year's budget.
Okay. But this is for fiscal year starting now, is it?
This is...
One July.
I'm sorry?
One July.
One July? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, retro.
I just want to make a correction. It's not just a six-month, it is for the whole year.
Right.
Or I misspoke when I said just a half-year. It is going to be for the whole year because it takes, it does go back effective. It's effective when the contract was ratified, but it gave them additional clothing for the remainder of the year.
Got it. So how and well will we know pricing for fiscal year 25?
So the pricing, or the amount of money we give each employee will be per the contract. And then, when they renegotiate the contract, we can take into consideration how much clothing has changed in three years, but it won't change over the next three years, even if the pricing of the... in three years, but it won't change over the next three years, even if the pricing of the uniforms go up.
So the dollar value or the amount in the budget will not change for fiscal year 25? Is that what I just heard?
Right, three years.
Okay. All right. Thank you for explaining that. I appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 12-4-2023.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, Tremble?
Groton Utilities has a master service agreement with Tremble. This is the first year. This, this went over $50,000. Last year, it was slightly under 50,000. This year, it's 2,000, just under 2,000 over. So this is coming, this is for next calendar year. Tremble is our O M S system. We are actually rolling out tablets for the trucks that will have the system and what customers have power and don't have power, and live maps on the trucks that will be running off this outage management system. The outage management system is what they use in electric to track outages now. It just isn't portable. We're trying to bring it portable. But, and this is software that we've had for a long time, and it is very good. It's, it's spatial. You can actually watch the trucks on the system, and you can see where everybody is. And then the system tracks all the meters. The meters self-report, and the, the graphic shows you exactly who has power and who doesn't have power.
Okay. Questions or comments on this resolution? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 12-4-2023.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay, Finance. This is informing.
So it's been a while since we've gone through the finance, so we're trying to get back on track with bringing these to you on a monthly basis. And as per normal with the, kind of keep a eye on time, we'll go through them fairly quickly. If you do have questions, just let me know, or if you want a different format or anything like that. I know this is going to be the first time for a few. So we're going to start with the Groton Utilities financials. They should be in your packet. And we'll start on page six, which is the Electric Division. And this will be year-to-date through the end of October. The total, Row 19, the total electric revenue was 18.6 million versus a budget of 19.2 million, or 572,000 below the budget for the revenues. You'll see the major driver there is the industrial is below budget of the 368,000 year-to-date. The total operating expenses on Row 41 are 19.5 million versus a budget of 21 million, or 1.5 million under budget currently. The biggest driver there is Row 28, the purchase power. Again, with sales being down, you're buying less power, so that is coming in on a budget at the million. Row 66, the net income before bond principles is 2.3 million versus a budget of 1.5, or favorable of 747,000 year-to-date. One of the things that you're going to see in next month's financials is that Row 30 operation and maintenance. I'm not sure where it's going to come out, but you're going to see that that variance will be down. We did have the retro payment for the Electric Division based on the contract being settled in the month of November. So that'll hit there. So that's kind of a very high overview of Electric. Like I said, unfortunately, the revenues are falling a little bit below budget. Again, a lot of that is seasonal too, with depend, weather dependent, if it's not as hot, and the ACs aren't running and so forth. So that was another factor of the revenues being down. But overall, we are still on target and above budget. So then we'll flip to page 12. And we'll go through the same thing for the Water Division. Row 17, the total water revenue is 4.2 million versus a budget of 4.6, about 400,000 below budget. Again, that's mainly driven by the industrial class of being 205,000 below budget year-to-date. Line 30, total operating expenses, 3.8 million versus a budget of 4.2 million, or 438,000 below budget, resulting in a net income of 141,000 versus a budget of 159,000, or roughly 19,000 under budget for the Water Division. So that one is coming under, and the main driver there is the fact of the, the lower revenues being offset by the underbudgeted operation and maintenance. Again, you're going to see, it may be this month or maybe next month, there will be a retro payment going again for the Water Division based on the contract that was just settled. So you'll see potentially a spike in that line, 25 operation and maintenance for those payments. And then we'll turn to page 17, which is the Sewer Division. And the Sewer is driven off of water, so when we see a shortfall in the water sales within the city, it affects the sewer as well, as also with the deduct meters in the, one of our industrial clients. So you'll see there, the total sewer revenue is 1.3 million versus a budget of 1.4, or 164,000 below budget. And you can see the, the big bucket there is that industrial, which we saw that was below budget in the water as well. Row 26, the total operating expenses, 1.1 million versus a budget of 1.3 million, or 200,000 below budget. And Row 37, the net income is 72,000 versus a budget of 31,000, or 40,000 favorable. Again, the favorable budget is based on the less than budget operation, maintenance versus the, the revenue. So overall, everything, even though revenues are down, the, the expenses are tracking in the, in the same, keeping everything favorable as far as the net income goes in all three divisions.
Okay. Do you want to, any questions on Groton Utilities? Counselor Norris?
Can you please give me, how are we defining what is industrial in comparison to commercial?
Think of, try not to get too specific. You're, you're more, you're, you're bigger, the bigger in production facilities within the, within the town or within our territory is, is in that, in that bucket.
Okay.
I think the commercial would be the smaller, the restaurants, the-
So your commercials are like your small businesses? Your industrials are your, the large businesses that we have?
Could you give me an example of?
Well?
Yeah, I'm not sure what.
Well, we don't normally name them. We're talking about them.
Okay.
I mean, I can talk to you about it offline.
Yeah, that would be helpful. That would be helpful. And then the last question would be, so during COVID, we saw a reduction in usage for commercial and industry in comparison to residential. Have we started to see that normalize at all? And is it possible? I don't know how you would do this if it would be usage, because it can't be dollars. It's got to be usage, like, or is commercial, industry, residential now looking the same as 2018, 2019?
Year-to-date, it's actually tracking lower than last year year-to-date as far as usage is going. So we're actually down. And that's how the budget is developed for the utilities, is we take last year's usage and factor in any knowns, plus or minus, if we know something's going to be coming through, or if we know something's going away, we try to factor those in. And that's how we build the budget on the new rate. So that's why everything's kind of tracking below. It's truly based on the usage being down from last year in that same period. So I mean, we could, we could, we could go back and look what that usage was from 19. It's actually in the report on, so for Electric, it would be on page eight. Has the, the kilowatt sold for year-to-date, and then the page before it is the month?
Yeah, but I was really interested in like, where do we match up to pre-COVID?
Yeah, we could, we could go back and, and get that information. It's all historical.
Well, because I'm just trying to figure out, so if the usage in 2019, 2018 was today, and I know we did some, I used the wrong terminology, so excuse me, rate increases, like where would we be if we had that level of usage? I'm just trying to piece that piece together.
I can get, I can put something together for you.
Doesn't have to be elaborate.
And one of the things that, so when we first started this, particularly on the sewer side, we put our best guess together, and then a couple of our, you know, at least one of our large industrials put in deduct meters. So we've been taking that into account. So the first couple of years, we were off a little bit because we, one, underestimated, didn't anticipate, and then underestimated the impact of the deduct meters. Now, we think it's pretty much there, but then you have some seasonal variations in water usage. Some people, some of the residential customers are doing, installing their own deduct meters. So there are some, there's some conservation methods, measures that are going on as well. So these are things that they're, that they're trying to get their arms around. I don't know that we're ever going to be 100% on, but, you know, we're still going to try to tweak it so that we get better, so we can better forecast, better forecast all three divisions.
And if I may, I think you brought up a very good point, that people becoming more and more energy consumption aware. So they are doing things to either save their pocketbook a little bit or even the environment. So you brought up a very good point. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield?
Ron, how long is longer on T V C? I keep seeing-
20, 28. It's 28, 29. So in the first quarter of '29 should be the last payments on T V C. The major of it's going to be done by the 28, by the end of '28. Any other questions or comments? Okay. You want to move on to City?
Yep. And then for the same thing, we did the, the City by department. Again, you'll see going through these expenditures, with the exception of a few buckets, everything is roughly around 70, 70 or 80% spent year-to-date. So there's nobody that looks completely like they're going haywire with their budget. Just to point out a couple that are below that piece, you'll see the citizens' participation, which has a budget of 8,500, and the year-to-date spend of 4,465. That's mainly due to City Day, which is a one-time event that happens in August. So that's why that's so, so low as far as the percentage of the budget remaining. The other one would be Parks and Rec, which has a budget of 1.5 million and 544,000, or 64% remaining. Again, that's seasonal with the summer activities that kind of happen, start in the prior fiscal year, but a lot of it happens in this fiscal year. And so that's why you'll see that one below. And then the other two that are, are down are just based on timing of payments. The General Insurance, having a budget of 120,000 and paid to date a 72,000. Those are based on July payments that are paid in full and not done as installment payments throughout the year. So that's what drives that down, one being the consultant firm, along with a couple of the policies. And then the final one is the Debt Service or the Public Improvement, has the budget of 337,000 or 147,000. We had one interest payment on that, so then the next payment will be the interest in the principal, which is why that's at the 46. Again, it's just the timing of the, the payments. But other than that, everybody else is, like I said, roughly that 75% or above.
Any questions or comments on the municipal? Okay. Thank you, Ron.
And if there's any recommendations on, that you want to see anything different, please let me know, and we can make changes.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on. Bridge Street Parcel, Leslie? This is informing.
Good evening. Welcome to the, to the, to new counselors I haven't met yet. I'm Leslie Korean. I'm the city planner. And I was asked to come this evening to talk about the fact that we have acquired a very small piece of land, and to explain how we went through this so that you are all aware. The, just to explain where, how we came about this, there were two parcels, again, very small sort of triangular shaped parcels that are off of corners and into the roadway at the intersection of Bridge and North. And these, and the one, this one parcel was offered to us by, as excess property from the state, which doesn't ha, it's not an unusual thing to happen, but it doesn't happen that often. So it was offered to us for no more than a dollar. And it was at a time that we were, we, well, we've been looking at MS4 stormwater management projects and where we may need to look at infrastructure projects, or whether they're, you know, repiping, or things like rain gardens. There's also looking at, because this parcel's at a corner, it's also looking at the possibility of changing, having the ability to change some space and some curbing for traffic purposes in the future. And so went ahead and told the state that we would like to acquire that piece, and we were going to hold off on the other piece. This all went through the, pardon me if this gets a little tedious. I'm at a tiny, a lot of process and a tiny piece of property. Went through the Real Estate Committee, which is an advisory committee to the mayor. And it was, so we had agreed that we would acquire the, that one property for no more than a dollar. We went through all the paperwork, and it was not quite a year ago. It was, it was in the middle of the holidays, and things were a little bit crazy at the time. And it was just like, okay, how do we, you know, let's get this done. And so we got the paperwork done for the state. However, in our haste to be efficient, and I will put this on me, what I didn't do at the time was to, at the time, take it to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an 824 review, which is anytime we acquire property, we get rid of property, we make substantial improvements, we need to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission and get their, they vote on whether it's consistent with the plan of conservation and development, and whether to issue an advisory notice to the council as to whether it would, they advise in favor of acquiring, in this case, acquiring this property or not. Again, it was the holidays. We were dealing with a whole bunch of things, and that piece just slipped through, and that's kind of the kicker that go, that tells you, you've got to go to the council. So hence, it didn't come to the council either. My sincere apologies, those of you who've known me for a while know I'm, I try really hard to be thorough, and I think this is my first screw-up here. So anyway- um, here, so anyway. Um, the other piece of that is, so it didn't come to the council in July, when we realized what had happened. In July, I brought it to the, um, Planning and Zoning Commission where they voted unanimously in favor of sending a favorable review to the council. And and then between holidays and getting the paperwork done on that, it's coming, um, to you in an informational way because the process was not followed properly. I'm coming to you in an informational way to say, these are your options and this is what happened. And we are talking about something that is point, I think it's three thousand, two hundred and thirty square feet. Um, and, which is point one-one acres. Uh, it's really quite small. It is not something, it is, we haven't acquired a building. We have, uh, it does comply with the Plan of Conservation and Development, uh, both in terms of looking at MS four, um, stormwater management programs in the future, looking at traffic changes that we may want there. And as, um, most of you know, that we are doing a, um, tactical urbanist installation in that area and at that intersection. Um, so if we find that there are things that we want to do, we won't have to then spend the time going to the state and saying, hey, we'd like to change the radius on this curb. So, there are all kinds of good reasons for us to have acquired it. Just didn't happen quite the right way. Um, so I'm mea culpa here. And, um, again, it is about transparency and honesty. It was truly just an oversight. It was my mistake, it was not, um, it just was at a time when lots of things were going on. And I'm sure we've all been through something like that in some piece of our life. Um, here's mine. So, um, let me just look through my notes and see if there's anything else that, um... Okay, and just to be clear about some dates, um, it was filed on the land records in the town, um, last December. December fourteenth, to be exact. So, it's, it's, not that it matters, but it's less than a year. Um, now, things happen to it and, um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Uh, you can be sure this won't happen again.
Deputy Mayor Depot, you have a hand up?
Deputy Mayor, um, so I have a couple of questions. So, the sale went through December fourteenth of last year. Uh, what triggered up, do you feel notified of it right now?
It was actually being... Honestly, I don't, I'll be honest with you, I don't remember. I brought it to, to Planning and Zoning in July and, um, so it was something bef, you know, right before that. I will... It may, it may very well have been, um, discussions with the Tactical Urbanist Group that we're working with that was suddenly a...
I, I understand, you know, oversight, looking at the, um, documents that were provided as support, there was a pretty detailed email regarding the eight-twenty-four and bringing it for approval to the council. Um, and there were one, two, three, four, five other people on that email. Um, so I guess my question to the mayor is, um, you know, none of those, not, not the other five people on that email aren't, well, necessarily for this, but what are we putting in place to make sure this doesn't happen again? Because, um, it, it seems like the communication was there. There's the seven steps that we need to take if we want to purchase this property, but we stopped apparently, or we, we skipped over F-five with the eight-twenty-four and getting approval from the council. Um, and we just went straight to purchasing it. Uh, did we not have a procedure with checkboxes or, you know, some kind of, do we not have something in place to, to prevent that from happening? I mean, it would be as simple as checking, um, with those things on it. Uh, and, and, so, I, I guess that's my question, what are we doing going forward to make sure this doesn't happen?
Okay, so we have a, we have an ordinance that outlines what we should do. Uh, the ordinance, we weren't sure. Uh, there were members of the commission, of the committee that weren't sure about the ordinance and it came up. And then, we looked at the ordinance and we said, oh, we didn't do this. And then, in preparation for bringing it to the council, uh, I wanted to find out what did we need to do if the council says they don't want this? And we did the research, uh, with the state that we could write a letter and ask them to take it back. The Real Estate Committee has since met and said they still think we need this piece of property for future, uh, either for MS four or for other work, maybe with a streetscape or whatever, if we decide to go down, uh, down that road. So, the thing is, we need to make sure that we're following the ordinance. We're now, everybody on the committee is aware now of the ordinance. We've reviewed the ordinance, I had everybody go through it. And, uh, we're now aware of it. And so, if we follow it in the future, it shouldn't be an issue.
Okay, um, it, it just seems to me, like I said, the process seems pretty clear. There, there is an email, um, laying out stuff, stuff that needs to be done and that wouldn't follow through if we didn't go. It's pretty clear there.
Well, we had discussed, we had discussed that we were going to do that. And then, the next thing you know, we get a, a letter from the state saying you're now the happy owners of this piece of property. So, it... Is that?
Yeah, Glenn, I think...
Can you walk us through that?
Sure, I think the, the answer to your question is actually Danny and I have been talking about checklists lately. Um, and it is, I, I, we're going to be developing, um, checklist for a bunch of things and this will be the next thing on the list.
So, so you said, uh, Mayor, that the, we received notice that we were the owners of it, but that it was recorded on twelve-fourteen in the town. So, what was the actual purchase date of the property?
That's when it was purchased. That was the date. I think that what the, um, what the mayor's referring to is the, the second piece that was being offered. We got a notice and, you know, I, that, it's sort of coming back to me. I think that was the trigger for it because we didn't know if for the second piece, they were going to, was that going to be, you know, for no more than a dollar also? Which does kind of change how you look at something. They want ten thousand dollars for something versus, you know, ninety-nine cents or a handshake. Um, and so, I contacted the state and talked to them about it and they said, no, we want to sell it. Um, and initially, they were going to have the abutting property, property, property owners take a look at, uh, bidding for it. That, we weren't interested in doing that. Um, the prop, the, this is the second piece of property. But it did trigger the, oh yeah, what are we doing with the other one? Where does that stand? I can't say that it was a clean memory process. It was a...
I, I think, you know, clearly, if we're having issues with, you know, where we are in the process, I think a checklist maybe is a good idea to keep at the forefront of, file for something like this. Um, I, I'm honestly a little bit surprised, uh, that we're just hearing about it considering, because it looks like you, we learned about it in June or July. And, I mean, I, looking through the file, it makes sense for us to own that, that people in, obviously. Um, but, uh, you know, now, it, it obviously doesn't make sense to do an eight-twenty-four and get approval because...
The eight-twenty-four was actually done.
Oh, we did do an eight-twenty-four?
Yes.
Before it was purchased?
No, after, it wa, it was... I, I'm, I'm not defending the process we ended up going through here. I can only tell you what happened and tell you that I have no intention of ever letting that happen again.
Right, no, and my intention is not to harp on, on that, that it's because it happened incorrectly, but just that, uh, I, we, I think we need to actually make a change in process in order for this to happen again. Um, so that I'd be interested in seeing. Um, and it, and it looks like you, you have had discussions about doing some sort of checklist to make sure that we, we check that box before the, the purchase goes through with anything like this. Um, again.
Yeah.
That answers my question, so definitely. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Okay? All right, thank you, Leslie. All right, I'm going to bring the chief, I'm going to bring the, did you have a?
So, there's no action we need to?
No, well, and I'm not bringing, I'm not bringing action for it, we already have the property. The, we wrestled internally with, do I want to bring it to council? But in the past council, uh, there were a couple of items that ended up getting brought, not because of something I did, but because of other things. And the council's like, well, why are you bringing us something that we have to approve after it's already done? And so, I don't intend to do that in this time. That's why I brought Leslie here to explain what happened and to basically apologize and state it's not going to happen again and what we're putting in place so it doesn't happen again.
I'm actually surprised the state followed the process not receiving information on the eight-dash-twenty-four council approval. Did that kind of?
Yeah, there's nothing in the eight-dash-twenty-four legislation that says that that recommendation has to go to the state.
But I'm surprised, but the process would have been from... From the state, do you want this piece of property? Yes. Okay, get it through your processes, get something from council. That, that...
I understand.
Yeah, it just sounds like...
I, I agree with you, it's actually...
Sounds like they kind of did something wacky too, because doing this all the time. I, I know that there's a process where the state says, well, wait a minute, did your council approve it? So, that's why I was kind of, yeah.
Yeah, no.
But stuff happens.
It does, thank you for your understanding, I appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Leslie. All right, I'm going to bring the chief up, I'm going to talk about the parking hearing officer first, then we'll talk about rules and group committees. All right, Chief?
Good evening, American Council.
This is, this is informing.
Uh, my name's David and I'm the Chief of Police for the city. And, uh, part of our ordinances deal with parking within the city. Section two fifteen of the city ordinances. And as a subsection of that, it mentions, um, the appointment or the position of a parking hearing officer. The reason for the parking hearing officer is because of the individuals that do receive parking enforcement. Uh, they have the, uh, the right to appeal that process. Uh, there is a timeline that comes with that. Uh, they have to file their appeal within ten days. And then, we have thirty days to answer that as far as setting up the appointment for, uh, the hearing. And that's all in the ordinance. The hearing officer cannot have anything to do with the police department. Can't be a police officer, can't be anybody that works for the police office, can't be anybody that writes, uh, enforcement. And it can't be anybody that has an outside, uh, position as far as parking enforcement or parking, uh, towing, uh, storage, et cetera, is concerned. So, it does stipulate in the ordinance that the mayor has the ability to, as the, uh, traffic authority for the city, has the ability to, um, designate a hearing officer. Currently, that position is vacant. Now, why do we need this? Well, to date, we have sixteen hundred and four parking tickets that the police department's written. We average about eighteen hundred for the year, uh, parking. And right now, we're sitting on twenty-three pending appeals that come from that. Uh, because of the vacancy of the position, we've actually had to, uh, give back fifteen, um, appeals or, uh, we'd have to void out fifteen tickets so far, uh, parking enforcement tickets so far because of the timeline, uh, involved in that. So, uh, I just wanted to come and talk about, uh, the parking enforcement officer because, or hearing officer, because we do need one, uh, as part of our, uh, parking enforcement process. And like I said, that is covered in ordinance number two fifteen.
Counselor Sheffield?
Uh, what budget, would that, uh, come out of, for, uh, putting someone in, in a paid position? Would that, or is that not going to be a paid position?
It's not a paid position, that's, uh, just an appointment for a volunteer.
Volunteer, okay.
Yes.
And we've already identified someone and I've already issued a letter for them. Like I said, this is informing only, I just wanted to let you know because we have, uh, started an increase in writing of parking tickets and that will continue. And so, therefore, we needed to make sure that we filled the parking hearing officer. So, I just want to make sure you guys were aware of that, that the council was aware. Any questions or comments? Counselor Piazza?
So, how was the process in getting the volunteer? How did that come to be? That somebody, that, somebody out in the community knew that we had this position open as a volunteer? How did that, how did that process go?
We talked to everybody we saw and said, do you know anybody, would you like to do it? And we put it out word of mouth.
Okay, so it wasn't anything that was posted or published or anything at all? Was there any specific requirements at all for it or?
No, ma'am. So, all it says is the mayor has the responsibility and the power to appoint a hearing officer.
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, that's it, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next thing is council rules. So, uh, you guys have received the council rules in the past? Uh, I think in the last... In the welcome packet. So, we could address this, we could do this a couple of different ways. Uh, if you've already looked at them, we can talk about them. Or, uh, we could move this to the mayor and council meeting of, uh, twelve-four-twenty-three. Or, we could, you could send your recommendations and questions or we could talk about it at the next count. So, what is council's, Counselor Sheffield?
Are we setting up a committee?
A committee to review the rules?
Well, are we setting up a rules committee?
Well, when we get to committees. But the rules com, the rules committee is if you have issues with the rules, it's not to develop the rules. The, the council has the rules and they will be, so right now, we're operating on the old rules until the new rules are adopted.
Okay, and normally that, once the rule committees come together, we go into executive session, which didn't happen the last time, but...
Do what now?
Go into executive session to discuss, discuss any change that we need in the rules, it's been done before.
Well, I, I'm not sure that we're going to do that this time. I mean, if we're ready to ma, if, if we wanted to discuss our rules, our rules should be discussed, uh, publicly.
Well, it hadn't been in the past until once I came back. And we had a rules committee, which was discussed of not having one. So, and then we did, we had three members that were a part of the rules committee, but we never went to executive session to discuss whether there were any changes that needed to be made. So, I'm not sure how...
Okay, what, what we did last time was we brought it to a cal and we said, these are your, these are the rules. Do you have any changes to them? Do you have any comments on them? Because they are this council's rules.
I'm not sure if we ever discussed that, not to my knowledge.
Yes, we did. And so, we approved, I got a resolution for the rules.
Well, we got a resolution as far as establishing a committee?
No, we got a rule, we got a, we got a resolution... No, we got a rule, we got a, we got a resolution establishing the rules. That's the rules that we operate under now.
So what's, what's the difference, like I said, when we established a committee of three?
Yep.
Okay.
So when we, when we finally get to committees, I'm gonna ask, who wants to be on the rules committee?
Okay.
And then the rules committee is there in the event that when we're in a meeting, council or cow, committee of the whole, that there's an issue with the rules, then the rules committee can then address it.
But we have gone, like I said, before, it was going into executive session to discuss it amongst the members of the?
I, I don't think we've done that since I've been mayor.
Yeah. It was Counselor Russ, Counselor Heed, and myself.
Well, I.
Yeah, I guess maybe, you know, you have to reflect, you know, refresh your recollection, but that's.
Well, I think we need to go, I'm not gonna go into executive session unless we go look at the FOIA and see that we meet the executive session requirements. And I'm not sure that, that I can get us there, especially for three people. It would, maybe that group met, but it wasn't executive session.
It was.
Okay.
It was.
It shouldn't have been.
You ordered it, so that was the way it was.
I don't think, okay, I'm not gonna get into a discussion, argument with you over this. So how do we want, how do you want to address your rules? Deputy Mayor Depot? I didn't see your hand.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would be in favor of, you know, I know everyone got the rules last week. I would think, I understand Counselor Sheffield's concern about a rules committee. The real question is if any of the counselors have an issue with the rules as they are written, whether or not we want to approve them that way. So I think, to me, the sensible thing to do would be for everyone to take the time to review them if they haven't already, and then contact the mayor's office if they would like another, to make some recommendations or suggestions before we approve the rules. I mean, because you could do that now as well in the committee of the whole, if everyone's ready to discuss the rules or if anyone has any. But I would think if we have issues on the rules, maybe everyone could contact the mayor individually if they have a specific change they want for the rules or something like that, so that the clerk can also put together a draft of, of any proposed changes, and then we can discuss those. That would be my proposal, is for everyone to take the time to review the rules and then send any potential changes or recommendations or suggestions to the clerk before the next committee of the whole, or before the next mayor and council meeting, if they wanted to, if we wanted to just vote on it then.
So we have a mayor, we have a mayor and council meeting on the fourth of December. We have, are we doing a special cow on the eleventh?
Yes.
So we have a special committee of the whole on the eleventh, and then on the eighteenth, we have a mayor and council meeting.
And that's it, because the, the regular cow landed on a holiday.
Right.
So it's canceled.
Counselor Norris?
Following what Deputy Depot suggested, that if we do, 'cause I'm not quite sure everyone had the time to look at the packet, even though we, some of us received it last week, is that look at it, whatever, edit, suggestion, changes, that kind of stuff. We come back on December eleventh, which is a cow?
Okay.
Which is a cow?
Yep.
At that point in time, and then we can take it from there. But I also wanna take the opportunity to add, it's somewhat unsettling when, when I hear, well, we shouldn't have done that, I don't know why we did that. It, and it just seems very haphazard in the way that we do things. It seems to be a, a change. So I don't know if it could help that, I'm not saying that it is a charter, charter change, anything like that, but in the council rules, is that a good place to say, this is how we determine the discussion of the rules? Discuss how changes are made, because if some of us think that there was a different process four years ago, or six years ago, let's research that, and let's find out if there was. But, but it is somewhat, like, I just feel sometimes we kind of like, we did it like that the last time, but that wasn't the real way to do it, so let's change the way we do it. You know, so I, I think we should take our time, discuss this on December eleventh, but at the same time, go, we've gotta have minutes somewhere. Go back and look at the minutes and see what exactly did we do? And then say, was that the right way? What is the right way? Do we benchmark? 'Cause I don't know if there's anything written that says the way we do things versus, let's just have a meeting, let's have a caucus, like, let's write something down. So four years from now, six years from now, there's no discussion of like, well, this is the way I did it, and that's the way I wanna do it, that there's something at least we can start from in writing. That's what I would recommend.
Okay, so be prepared to discuss this at length on the eleventh. Any changes that you have, get them to me and to the clerk before the eleventh, so that we can get a draft up. And we'll discuss it then, and then if we're ready, we'll move it to the eighteenth. If we're not ready, we'll move it to, to January. I mean, currently, we are working under the rules that exist now, so it's not that big a deal.
Right.
But if there are things that you wanna put in the rules, and they're not already in the rules, get them in the rules. There are some things that, that aren't in the rules, 'cause they've never been codified. Sure, they're your rules as the council. Okay?
Deputy Mayor Depot? Um, thank you. The, I know the clerk provided us with a copy at the last meeting, but can, can the clerk send an electronic copy to us as well? Would that be easy?
What's that?
Well, can the clerk send an electronic copy of your rules?
Can you send them in Word? That way, if people want to track changes.
Okay.
I mean, a PDF is fine with me. I just wanted to have a copy on my, in my email.
It'll be easy to change.
We're gonna send them to everybody.
Right. Thank you.
Counselor Norris?
If I may too, is maybe a brief education on the purpose of these rules? 'Cause, again, 'cause I, I think I heard, well, there's things that we do that aren't in here, and we didn't codify. So maybe it's time to discuss whatever those things are and put them in, or not, I, I guess. I don't know to what extent that we do things that aren't in here, that probably don't need to be.
I don't think the rules talk about caucus. I don't know that they, they need to be in there. The rules are typically for the conduct of mayor and council meetings and of committee of the halls. That's typically what the rules are for. But if you want to add something else to the rules, you can add something else to the rules. I mean, like I said, they are your rules.
But I think we may be seeking your leadership on this one too, 'cause some of us may have only been on here one term or one week. And as much as we say, yeah, the council rules, we don't, some of us may not exactly know what those rules should be or mean, or do we? So I guess that's where I'm coming from. So how do you, it's like, you don't know what you don't know.
So I guess I don't understand. What is it, what is it you're asking me to provide to the council?
Is your suggestions on what rules should be included or not included in this document? 'Cause we don't know what we don't know.
Okay.
I mean, if you have suggestions, or if you don't, you may not, I'm just.
Well, have we had any issues in the past that, where we've had to go to the rules and say, hey, we're not doing it like the rules, or we should have this in the rules or anything like that? In the, in the last two years?
I would say no.
Okay. Counselor Sheffield?
Well, I think more so for Counselors Patterson and Artalee, as far as giving them a, a tutorial of the rules, so to speak, and kind of let, you know, see what you guys like to, you know, get, get a gist of what it's all about. And I think that would be something to kind of, you know, let them get that background of how we operate and how, why the rules exist in, you know, for a meeting. I said Roberts Rules, that, you know, a lot of things like that, let them get a feel of what that's all about. And a lot of times, like I said, we just say the rules, the rules, the rules, but there's a, a purpose for it, you know, as far as how government should operate, should run meetings. So I think that's important.
Okay, Counselor Norris?
I, I, I think, just remembering two years ago, we had a really good training and introduction to council, and that will continue. And I know Deputy Mayor has been working on that and talking about that, but I'm just specifically talking about these rules. So these rules are adopted every two years. But where I'm coming from is, we have new people that want to, or were asking to approve rules, that they don't know what the purpose of the rules are. So I'm just saying that, yeah, they could read, you know, anything, and if they don't know what the purpose behind it. So all I'm saying, cow is best, but I agree with you, if there's nothing that the old, the old folks, the returning folks, feel that there needs to be change or anything, that, that's great. I was just going from the standpoint, with you being the veteran, so to speak, of being on council, either in mayor or, or a council person for, what, ten years? That I don't know if there's anything that you've come across in the past ten years that you go, hmm, well, wait a minute, maybe it should be in there.
Okay.
There may be absolutely nothing.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Depot, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe in the past, we have done, when we do Freedom of Liberation Act training for the new counselors, we've had a discussion about the rules as well. We've kind of combined those things. And that would maybe be a more appropriate forum to discuss the rules, 'cause they all kind of, those topics are kind of on, in the same vein for the council. How meetings are run, what's appropriate for, what's appropriate for executive session. Those kind of go together with FOIA discussions, and I, I believe that's how we've done it before. And I, I think that makes the most sense. Did you have a plan for some FOIA training with the, I think his name's Tom, right? That does the FOIA training for the new counselors?
Okay, hold on.
Yes.
Uh, Clark McCur, please, address that, please.
Deputy Mayor, the, the state FOIA commission will be here on January twenty-fourth, I believe it is, for the January cow. We could not get, we couldn't secure anyone sooner, but they are sending someone for that cow to do training.
And we're also trying to get somebody for Roberts Rules training.
Right, that's.
So that, one, we can bring the new counselors up to speed, and two, we can remind previous counselors requirements for Roberts Rules. Counselor Sheffield?
Yeah, that was, I was suggesting, I think we had somebody in the past for Roberts Rules introduction, so I think that would be.
We had, the clerk and I are trying to get people here.
'Cause then that'll certainly give them a, a, you know, background.
Absolutely. Counselor Norris?
I'm sorry. Would it therefore make sense that, can we operate under the existing rules until January after the FOIA and all that kind of training? And then say, the first cow, or even that night, versus try to tackle it now?
Well, I think it's important for the council to review the rules that are there in front of you, or that you were given the rules, and see if you understand them. I, I don't think the rules are that complicated, but if they're written such that they can be interpreted a couple of different ways, maybe we should talk about what that is and talk about what the rules are. We can certainly wait to discuss it till we have the FOIA training, but I wanna make sure everyone is prepared. So my question, my comment is be prepared for the eleventh. But if we wanna wait till the, till January, that's fine. We'll continue to operate on these rules. I just don't want counselors to not look at the rules because they don't have to until January, because sometimes what happens is they don't look at the rules. And then they're not fresh, and we're not ready to have the deliberation, discussion, and debate that they deserve.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the rules? Okay. Group committees? I had asked you before about what groups you wanted to be on. I tried to put you on the groups that you asked for. It was successful in most of the cases, but not successful at all. But, so I have a group one and group two. So in group one, we have economic development, community development, and public works. And then group two, we have public safety, parks and rec, and finance. And then I have, so if you look at our rules, these are, if you look at the rules, these are currently the standing committees in the rules. Should you decide that you don't want these committees, then we'll start all over again. But right now, these are the committees, and then there's, so there's eight standing committees. These six, committee of the whole, and then the rules committee. Okay? And with that, I'll take anybody who would be interested in being on the rules committee. Okay, Counselor Sheffield? Counselor Piazza? And Deputy Mayor Depot? Anybody else wanna be on the rules committee? Okay, then that's who we'll have right now on the rules committee. Anything else on the group committees? All right?
Mayor?
Mayor?
This is where I prepared, currently, currently as the groups are set up, each individual subcommittee has its own agenda and has its own meeting time. I would like to show an option of combining group one, their topics into one agenda and having one meeting with having the three topics. Can I show you? The, the.
So you still have three committees?
Yeah.
'Cause group one typically meets, and all three of the committees are meeting, same with group two.
This is an example only.
This can be discussed. We'll need to send an electronic copy to the deputy.
Right.
But. And then when we look at the, at the rules, we can look and see if this is how we want, what council wants to do. Or you can have an independent agenda for each committee.
Okay. What I provided for the new counselors was how the agendas are currently set up, right? Every single topic, there's a finance agenda, there's a public safety. Every single topic, there's a finance agenda, there's a public safety agenda, public works agenda, right, for one group. I'm suggesting or showing what it could look like if all three topics were on one agenda. It's the same group of three people. It looks like there's one meeting, and you just each talk about that subject.
Counselor Sheffield?
Well, yeah, it's, it's, it's a good idea, as long as, I guess, if there's enough sheets, I guess, just in case there's multiple discussions per, per meeting, because it's three meetings, technically speaking, because that's... So, we would need, the chair would need each separate sheet to fill in of any separate discussion and attach it to that one agenda.
Oh, for minutes or notes?
Right.
Sure.
Exact, yeah, that's what, you know, I would think would be there.
Counselor Piazza?
Thank you. So I'm just trying to understand, so when you say that, so we would have, it would be dictated what we're discussing on the, maybe meeting?
The agendas, so the agendas are the same as before. It's just that they're all, like, for example, all group one agendas would be under one main agenda.
In, in past, you received an agenda that had the referral list on it, right? So that's what, that's all that was dictating what the meeting was. I'm just taking that referral list and making an, putting an A in front of it, and putting it on the same agenda as the other topic that you would be a, a part of.
So, it's, it's a suggestion, you can take a look at it. And then when we talk about the rules, we can talk about if you like it, if you don't like it, or suggestions for improvement. Anything else, Counselor Norris?
No, I think it's a great idea. I mean, if anything, then you don't have to, like, motion into a meeting, motion out of it, motion back into number two, motion out of it, it's one. We'll take, take your minutes if you need. But it, it's a simplified way and effective way of doing it.
So that's what, your purpose is to expedite this better?
Right, so you don't go...
And the, and the recording of it, personally?
Well, and so you don't go, have to go to a meeting with three separate agendas? Um, every time, you're, you're...
Right, and you didn't have to touch three separate agendas? Or push out three agendas? No, I, I, I don't know, whatever...
As, as a resident, it seems simpler to follow also. So it wasn't just trying to make a job easier. It was also trying to make the whole process seem simpler to anyone wanting to look at what a certain subcommittee talked about that night.
And were citizens saying that there was difficult to follow?
No, I, I just found that to be...
Okay.
I'm gonna write, eh, you, Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. I am always in favor of efficiencies. However, I think our committees are still separate committees. So you would have to, if you wanted to combine them in this manner, you'd have to designate a chair for all of the committees. If there's one agenda, then one person would be running the whole meeting. And I just, I don't see logistically how that makes sense. And I, so then also what happens, so occasionally you'll have, in a group, two constitutes a quorum in your group. So you could have your meetings, so say, you know, on, in my, on my group, in my group, it's public safety, parks and rec, and finance. So for example, if the parks and rec person can't be there, then public safety and finance can still hold our meeting. But if the agenda's all combined, we're just skipping the parks and rec part of the agenda? Uh, it just seems to me that, that that's confusing. It's more confusing and less efficient. Again, I get trying to find efficiencies, and I get it being cumbersome that there are six committees. But the way it stands, I don't know that that even is logistically possible to combine them if they are designated as separate committees. Don't we have to run them as separate committees?
Yeah, you... Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'll finish your...
I mean, that's basically, I, 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 it doesn't make sense to me to run them like that when they are separate committees with separate chairs.
Right.
Because then you would have, would one of the chairs be then the chair of the whole group? If that doesn't make sense.
No, you would still, you would still have, you still, each group has three separate committees. Each committee has its own chair. And so the chair is responsible for their committee, and that's it. So you don't have one person that's a group one chair. You have group one, and here's the agenda for all of group one. And that would be, where's my list? So group one would be economic development, commi, community development, and public works. And each chair would be responsible for their portion of that overall agenda. So it's just how, it's just administration of it. It's not creating another committee. It's not creating a chair for group one.
But then you still would have to go into each meeting separately?
You do.
Through their separate committees?
You, you do.
So then where, where is the efficiency? I don't understand that.
I guess that would be something that would be discussed with rules in my, what I was thinking would be discussed with rules, of making it to where you wouldn't have to go in and out of each meeting. You would make one meeting, and these three topics are the, what is gonna be discussed at that group one meeting.
Okay. Counselor Sheffield?
Yeah, I concur with Deputy Mayor Depot. I think it, you have to separate, separate meetings because of, we're in separate departments to where, you know, we each have our own, you know, set of agenda. I mean, sure, it's, it looks great as far as that efficient part, but we have our own separate issues that need to be discussed, and we have to document. That's why the separate sheet that we have to fill in for the minutes and so forth. So I think it, I think it makes better sense probably to keep it that way, or you would have to probably do a whole nother separate sheet for one for finance, one for public safety, and one for parks and rec.
Well, that's correct.
So that, and that's what would have to be done along with this complete sheet agenda.
It's no diff...
But we'd have to, yeah.
It's no different than what you're doing now.
Right, but I see, but again, we'd have to have our own separate, again, to call our own meeting of what time we start and what's on the agenda to fill in.
Each, each one is gonna have to have, when you start?
Yeah.
What your agenda items are, the discussion, and then when you adjourn.
Right.
Right, that's not being eliminated by this.
Well, this says one separate adjournment at the very end, but we, you should adjourn after each meeting. That we started at the top.
So I, I think the council should look at this and if you, and discuss it when we get, get ready to discuss the rules. If you don't wanna do it, we don't do it. We stay where we're at.
Right.
If you do wanna do it, or you wanna change it, you could do that as well.
It's absolutely your guys' decision. I was just presenting a different option, but there are no hard feelings to our win.
It's a nice idea.
Anything else on committees? Okay. Then I will, we're gonna go into executive session. I'll take a motion, enter into executive session pursuant, pursuant to connect a general session to 1-600, 1-206A, personnel of fire department to include chief, mayor and council. And chief, who are we bringing in?
Matt Parizo and Kelly Gilis.
Okay.
Although I don't know if they would have to come in separately.
I'm gonna bring them, I, I wanna get to, I'm gonna get the executive session with both of them, but I'm gonna bring them in one at a time. I just, I need a motion and a second.
Uh, so move.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries. Okay? There will be, uh, no action out of, out of, nothing that you're gonna vote on tonight.